All right, good evening everyone. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as all.
So Erin, are you taking notes for us tonight?
Would you like me to do the roll call?
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Dunle.
Yep.
Councilmember DeYoung.
President.
Councilmember Kinzer.
President.
Councilmember Carnegie.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
And Councilmember Couch.
Here.
Okay, so I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
Who seconded?
I did.
So Councilwoman Couch made the motion and Councilwoman Kelly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, items 1 through 4, looking for an approval.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make sure you agree to the consent agenda. I am looking for approval.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinzer and a seconded by Councilwoman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're fortunate tonight to have some really great things happening and we're going to start with Louis, a presentation to Louis. So, you want to come forward Louis?
We're very fortunate in this community to have Louis as part of our team, part of our family. And he's already been honored once and actually he deserves many awards, but I'm going to be talking a little more on that. But I have quite a lengthy resume, I guess you would call, a life history here, which is absolutely amazing and amazing. So I'm going to read it, pardon me, overcoming a pole, so I hope that everybody can hear me. But Louis was actually born in Seattle, and of course we're not going to hold that against him. He was born in 1945. He grew up on Dewey Beach near Deception Pass and he attended Annecostas High School and graduated from there. He joined the US Army in 1967 and he attended the Army US Engineering School in Virginia.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Well, he later was sent to South Vietnam to work as a topographic mapping surveyor. He married Joanne Mines in 1970 and they had two sons, Aaron and Joshua. He attended Skagit Valley College and then went to the University of Washington. He graduated in '73 with a degree in forest engineering. Upon graduation, Louis worked for the Department of Natural Resources both in Forks and Sejorouli until 1978. And in between that time, before '78 came, he had actually gone to get a license for a professional land surveyor in '76. He started working for Skagit Surveyors in '79. While with Skagit Land Surveyors, he was involved in many surveying projects around the city, including baseball and softball fields at Janicki Fields, Little League Fields, including the Tesseract Field and the high school football field and the track, Denny Aenberg Memorial Football Field, Helping Hands Food Bank, and Habitat for Humanity. He was involved with the Sejorouli Little League as a coach and as a board member. Later, he was president of the Sejorouli Babe Ruth. Louis became a member of the Sejorouli Rotary Club in 1984 and he served as a Rotarian, as he served as a Rotarian president in 2003. During that time, he was also chairman of the Sejorouli Rotary Scholarship Committee and chairman of the Rotary Club to construct the bathrooms and the clock tower at Hammer Heritage Square, which we all enjoy so very much. During the eighties and the nineties, he was quite involved in a lot of committees. He was co-chair of the school levy. He was a member of the Sejorouli Riverfront Park Planning and Construction Committee. He worked on the feasibility committee for the remodeling and the update of Central School. He was chairman of the committee to search for a new high school. And those are just to name a few of the committees that he's been a part of. He's also been a member of the Skagit County Fair Board representing Skagit County District 3 and a member of the Skagit County Planning Commission representing District County 3 from '95 to 2002. He has also been on the City Council, served on the City Council for Ward 3 from 2005 to 2008. He is currently the chairman of the Northern State Recreational Task Force Committee promoting the construction of baseball and softball fields. He is a current member and secretary of the Peace, Health, and United General Community Health Board, but most recently, he is the recipient of the first ever Sejorouli Chamber of Commerce Hammer Heritage Award. Other affiliations is that he is a member of the Land Surveyor Association of Washington, the Skagit Island County Builders Association, EDASK, the American Legion Post 43, Chapter 1109 of the Vietnam Veterans of America, the Wildcat Steelhead Club, along with being a very proud father and father-in-law to Josh and his wife Amy, in addition to their grandchildren who call him Grandpa to Madeline and Mason. And that is why we are here tonight, awarding Louis this award.
So Louis, this is the award, and I will read it, what it is, what it says in just a minute, but first, you said you wanted to talk, so I want to give you the ability to do that. And there's some other people who are here to talk for you.
Okay, I got it. First of all, I want to thank everyone here for this fantastic honor. It was quite unexpected, but I've often thought about how things happen and they usually happen in threes. And after I got back from Vietnam, the first three things that were important for me to happen in threes was got married to Joanne Mines in 1970. We had two wonderful sons, Aaron and Josh. And I have to say that I could not have accomplished any of these things without Joanne's help and assistance and support. And so, thank you, Joanne. As a matter of fact, Joanne was our comptroller at Skagit Surveyors for 25 years until she retired on me eight years ago. And the second and third thing that happened in threes was, of course, had a wonderful daughter-in-law, Amy Andrews Riquay, and two grandchildren, Madeline and Mason. And now I should say there's, again, things happened in threes. As Julia mentioned, the first ever Hammer Heritage Award from the Sejorouli Chamber, thanks to Paula and the Chamber, it was greatly appreciated. And now this recognition tonight, and I'm happy to announce, and I was told I could do this tonight, by the Lions Club, Sejorouli Lions Club came, there's some of them right there, and there's Rose, and they said, "Would you be our grand marshal at the next Lager Odeo Parade?" So I told Rose I had to go home and talk to Joanne first, so I did. And she said, "Certainly do it," so we're going to do that. And also mentioned in here was the, being the chairman of the Northern State Recreational Task Force for some 20 years. About in 1999, we started this task force through Rotary Committee. And we completed the planning stage for softball fields and baseball fields between Helmech Road and Hanson Creek on the recreation area that the county owns. And over time, there hasn't been the need nor the right utilities in place and those kind of things, but now it's come to fruition. So we're going to get started this spring on moving forward with the ball field complex. Once it's revealed as to what it's going to look like, it's going to be fantastic. It's going to put Sejorouli youth fields on the map. Thank you.
That's great. So if I could have Josh come up first? Josh wanted to share a few words.
Thank you. I'm interested to hear what this award's called, actually. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Josh, Louis' son. I just turned 45 years old, so I'm wearing the beard to kind of make it look like I'm, you know, halfway to 50s, I guess. When you talk about the 40s, anyway. But I just wanted to say that, you know, when I was growing up, still living at home over at the house on West Bennett Street, which is where Mom and Dad still live today, I just remember Dad was, he was really busy. He was always off doing something, you know, when he got home from his job at Skagit Surveyors. You know, the various meetings that he had, he attended, the boards and the committees that he was a part of, the working groups, all of the preparation that went into that. He's a tireless worker, for those of you that know him well. He's always very prepared. And so, there were hours and hours put into these things that he was involved in. And what impressed me the most is, he was always there for the family. You know, he's one of my coaches, you know, he was always willing to take us fishing. There was always a fishing trip. And by the way, he's the best fisherman that I know, and I think a lot of you in this room would attest to that. But, and back then, a fishing trip was also a camping trip. Now with my family, we camp and maybe we fish. So, we always find, found a place to fish and there was a camping spot. But various ski trips that we would go on to Canada and Mount Baker. So what impressed me the most is he always found, you know, time to spend with the family. And I really appreciated that. And, you know, he set an example for me. I'm kind of following in his footsteps in a way, so. So I want to, I wanted to leave you with something here. I know we just have a short time, there's lots of stuff on the agenda, but there's a lot of things that kind of define my Dad. A lot of sayings that are out there, and this is one that I stare at every day, it's on my desk. And this is from Rise and Shine. It says, "True integrity implies you do what is right when no one is looking or when everyone is compromising." Okay? And I think that defines my Dad pretty well, so. And there's something that goes with this, for those of you that know Bible verses. "Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart, as working for the Lord, not for men." So I think that is a pretty good way to kind of define my Father. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Then we have someone else, Carl Garrison.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm Louis, or I'm Louis, no, I'm Carl. I'm the president of the Sejorouli Rotary Club this year. What a great honor that is, and a lot of work, too. Louis invited me into Rotary back in 1996, so he's my Rotary Dad, so I get to share that with him. And John Ward was our, was his Rotary Dad, so John Ward is my Rotary Grandad. If you know John Ward, that's a good thing. So Louis has done an amazing job throughout his career, as you heard tonight, and I can shorten my speech by a lot because of all of the things that you've mentioned, Mayor. Thank you for that. He's been really dedicated to Sejorouli and he's been an inspiration to me and his former partner, John Aberroth, as well. There has never been a park or playfield or community project that John or Louis did not donate the surveying for. I can't, I can't remember, I mean, we donated everything when we were together for these kind of things, and that's just the way we did it. And you taught me that and it continues to this day. So it's great. You've donated most recently to this Veterans Park that's going out on Helmech, and it's going to be a great park. I know a little bit about it because we're working on it with the county. And the Rotary Club's going to be building a sign, and we've got it all designed and we're going to be bringing water out to that structure that's out there. And we've got the sewer system or the septic system all designed and that'll be built pretty soon. And it's guys like Louis that make that happen because he started it back in 1999 or 1998 with the NSRA Committee and had that big design charrette, if you were there, you know about it. It was a big deal and it was Louis that made it happen, so thank you for that, Louis. I'll go to the other side. Let's see here. In Rotary, Louis has been there since 1994, that's a long time to be, and he's been an active, regular attender at Rotary. And that's a hard thing to do. A lot of guys go in spurts, they do a big thing and then they phase out. And Louis has been there every single year, and that is really saying something. And his Rotary Dad has been there every single year. And you know what? I'm going to do the same thing because I'm inspired by you. So I'm there every year. And it's because of you and John that I'm there and I appreciate that. Louis has been our historian in the club and now he, he's a little bit of a pack rat, I don't know if you know that. So John, everything in John Ward's collection of historical artifacts is now in Louis' possession. And he, I think he just kind of hovers over him all the time. He likes that kind of stuff. And it's great for the club because we don't lose sight of our history. So Louis is a very thoughtful guy. He's very passionate about his work. And as you know, on the City Council, he's been here fighting with you and against you, but always for something that he believes in. He has to balance the developer point of view with the jurisdictional point of view. And I think he does a really good job of that. And just most of all, you're a model citizen and a model Rotarian, and great job, Louis. Well deserved, congratulations.
So I am going to read the plaque. I actually had to blow it up. My glasses didn't cut it. So this says, "Presented to Louis H. Riquah. In recognition of 40 years of business in Sejorouli as Skagit Surveyors and Engineers, during your long and successful career in business, you served your community as a Rotarian, member of the Skagit County Planning Commission, served as a Sejorouli City Councilman, and frequent volunteer for both major civic projects and everyday needs of the community. Prior to opening SSNE, you and your partner, John Aberroth. You served your country in the US Army as topographical surveyors in Vietnam. Your commitment to Sejorouli made this community a better place for us all. With sincere gratitude and on behalf of the people of this great city, presented to you, Louis, on this 27th day of February 2019." Congratulations.
Thank you all. Boy, it's fantastic. One of the things that a good Rotarian does is, you don't get a plaque to hang on the wall to improve your business or whatever you're doing. If you're a Rotarian, you get a plaque to put on the wall to serve your community. And the slogan for Rotary is "Service Above Self." So if anybody here in the audience or you know of anybody that wants to be that type of person, just let me know, I'm on the membership committee.
There you have it. Thank you. Okay, and now I'm going to have Brian Hoysen come up. Brian Hoysen is our new member to the Sejorouli City Police. I had the honor and the privilege of being able to attend his graduation. And it's, that's really a wonderful event. And, you know, I don't know if it's possible for everybody to go or not, if it's open to the public, but I'm telling you, it's really quite moving and I was impressed. What you had to go through was tremendous to get here, to be here, to stand here in front of you right now. There was much work that had to be done, lots of dedication, lots of schoolwork, lots of physical work. So, so I am going to be swearing you in, all right? Raise your right hand. Okay, so. I, Brian Hoysen.
I, Brian Hoysen.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
I solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and state laws of Washington.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully and impartially perform.
Truly faithfully and impartially perform.
The duties of police officer in and for.
The duties of police officer in and for.
The city of Sejorouli, Skagit County, Washington.
The city of Sejorouli, Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
And just to recognize, Brian's brought his wife here tonight. She's been diligently waiting for him to get home. I think she's been waiting for him to get some stuff done around the house. And Brian, just to let you know, in about 39 and a half years, you can get some awards like Louis got tonight.
I'll start working on it today. There you go.
Thank you. Did you want to have a picture taken?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I think Brian's wife wanted to have one.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you mind getting one picture with Louis? We got to get it on the Rotary Rotarian display.
All right.
Louis, can you get up there, please? I'm asleep at this point. Sorry, folks. Thank you for putting up the list. All 200? Thank you.
All right. And now I need Heather. Heather Sorsdahl? Yep. Hi Heather. So Heather, how many years have you been with Sejorouli, just out of curiosity?
I've been almost 11.
She's been here almost 11 years and tonight, we are promoting her to the position of Sergeant. So I'm going to swear you in. So raise your right hand. So I, Heather Sorsdahl.
I, Heather Sorsdahl.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and of the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And will do to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will do to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully and impartially perform.
Truly faithfully and impartially perform.
The duties of police sergeant in the city of Sejorouli.
The duties of police sergeant in the city of Sejorouli.
Skagit County, Washington. As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God. I need you to sign.
So just so everybody knows, Heather Sorsdahl, she's an officer at the Armament of Police Department. We got Mom here, too. And Curtis' parents is her parents. She's official now, she outranks Curtis.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the Skagit Valley Tulip Festival poster presentation.
So we'll kind of do this in reverse order, I think, today. This is our 2019 Tulip Festival poster, and this is the one for the city of Sejorouli. So I am going to present this to you. And this is a, based on artwork by Ben Mann, no relation to Lee. And Ben is an artist, he got his start out of Bellingham and now makes his home in Mount Vernon. And nobody will say it's just like last year's. And it's bright and cheery and I think every time you look at it, you say, you smile and you say, "Spring's here." And then the other thing I'd like to point out is, we've been working with folks here in Sejorouli to expand the tulip festival's reach more into the town. And you'll find this year that we're doing more with the Chamber, Eagle Haven Winery, Woodfest. And our goal is to get people, when they're looking for things to do, to come on up here. And we appreciate your support and you'll find tulip festival brochures and if anybody needs more, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, thank you. Let's see, let me see. Lord knows, we're ready for spring, that's for sure. All right. All right, so we will move on to staff reports. Maybe you want to go ahead and kick us off?
Yeah, I don't know where Chief Tucker went, but I'm so happy I don't have to follow him this time. We're working on volunteer resident testing. We've got approximately five openings right now, and we're testing this weekend for those positions. There's still time to get the applications in, so if you know of anybody, let's bring them in. And I'm happy to say, I see two of our medics are back here. Marianne, say hi. We're about, for, I'd say 95% of our medics are about 80% done with their fire portion of it. So we're getting real excited. They're almost complete, which is great. They're doing a fantastic job. Our call load this year, we're up, I think we did the math on it, it's somewhere close to almost 100 calls above where we were last year. We're spending a lot of time in the Day Creek, Clear Lake, Big Lake areas, and everything seems to be going well. We haven't had too many complaints yet, so if you hear anything, let us know, but so far, they're doing a fantastic job. And like I said, I'm just happy I got to go before it this time.
Thank you. So we'll just step back, Chief Tucker.
All right, so you saw my biggest part of tonight. We're very happy to get Heather promoted and get Brian officially sworn in. He's, Brian is working with field training officers right now. He's, I think, gone through his first one. Officer Eddie was his first field training officer, takes him out in the field, trains him up. And then Dan Eddy has took off on us and is doing a military deployment to Korea. So he's in Korea right now. Our, getting Heather onto the Sergeant position is also a really helpful thing for us. We're going through a restructuring right now, and what we've done is we've, you guys have on your agenda for a little bit later on, salary stuff or salary approval on Sergeant McElwraith becoming a lieutenant. Last time we had a lieutenant was when, right before I was promoted. I was a lieutenant promoted to chief, and we haven't had a lieutenant since. So part of our restructuring is bringing Dan up to a lieutenant's position. And yes, he will be Lieutenant Dan. He's heard that about 1,000 times so far. And Heather's going to be moving to a night shift Sergeant position. And Jason Harris is coming to day shift to be a detective slash a proactive patrol Sergeant. He is really good at going after specific problems, and he's already working on that as he's moving into the day shift. So we're doing a lot of... So we're doing a lot of, we're doing a lot of shuffling around, but some really positive changes, and it's really been a big boost for morale to get us back with kind of the rank structure that we've been without for a while. We needed to get people trained up and get some experience on them, and it was just the right time to do all these things. And I think you're going to see a lot of good things, and hopefully, when we have our next city council meeting, we'll be swearing in Lieutenant Dan. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. John?
Thanks. I've got a couple of items on the agenda, so I'll try to be brief. Update on the planning commission, they're working on the urban village mixed-use overlay. They're really getting down to the details on that document now. So next month, instead of having a regular planning commission meeting, they're going to be taking a field trip to, down to the Bothell area to look at some, to look at an urban village in that area, to see what it looks like on the ground, get a sense for densities and parking, and how, you know, how it's going to fit in Cedar Woolley by seeing an example down there. That'll be published as a public meeting, and people can go along and be a part of that. We haven't exactly figured out the transportation for that yet, but it will be still a public I think that's all I got for you right now.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to introduce Travis Dills to you. He's the newest Public Works employee. Travis, you want to stand up or put your hand up? Us from Waste Management, we think you made a good choice in coming over here, so welcome aboard. Also, while I'm talking about solid waste, several of the council members had questions from your constituents regarding trash pickup after the snow events. As you know, we weren't able to pick up some areas for two weeks. So in order to get caught up quickly on the day they did pick up, we did not try to separate trash and recycle, so some of your constituents did observe that and questioned that, but it was just our effort to provide a very efficient service. So we did, all of that got basically sent to the normal solid waste disposal site. So anyway, but we're back on schedule now and doing what we normally do. Other than that, for Public Works, just as anybody's been observing, that pile of gravel over at the new library site's been growing, and that was delayed during the snow events as well. They did finish today, and so we have a nice trapezoidal-looking piece of dirt that's going to sit there until the library project itself starts. They'll use a good portion of that in leveling out the site. There'll probably be some surplus, which we already have a use for at another site. So that'll be, that'll be there for the next little bit. And no, we're not going to be building the new library building on top of that. The finished floor is roughly the level at the railroad side of that, coming up from that, and we'll be leveling out the site, as I said, to, basically, it'll be level with the back of the sidewalks that are on State Street now. So anyway, we're glad to get that project done. Other than that, we are waiting to finish the striping on State Street. When we get a few more days like this, we'll probably get that in, and that'll complete that project. We have some wastewater improvements that will be starting in mid-March, the project to fix some of the longstanding problems with flow down there. Other than that, we've got quite a number of design projects, and as you probably know, we, the mayor and Aaron and I made a trip to Olympia last week to introduce a couple of different things. One was the Jones John Liner Trail Project, which I gave you a copy of our one page on last week. We met with, I believe, 10 or 11 representatives, including the House and the Senate chairs of the Transportation Committee. I've been asked to go down tomorrow for a second round and do a 90-second update. Anybody that knows me probably realizes that's going to be a challenge, but we're going to do that, to present that project once again. The Senate side, if any of you have been reading the news on it, is proposing a new transportation package. That is a combination of a carbon fee and a six cents increase in the gasoline tax to fund transportation projects. There's some controversy about that, of course, because of the carbon fee, but that's the package as it currently exists. Of course, it has to go through the usual process of the hearing that's happening tomorrow plus negotiations with the House. Our project wasn't in the original package of 40 or so projects that were identified. What we're doing tomorrow is trying to get our project added, and Keith's been working with us on that. There are some philosophical things from his side of the aisle with parts of the package, so we're not sure exactly how that's going to work out yet. We have a second opportunity with the House part of the thing, and we've requested that Representative Eslic support this project, and I'll catch up with her again tomorrow and talk a little bit more about that with her as well. We would like to get in that package, if possible, to fund the entire project at one shot. It's about a $30.6 million estimate right now, including all the design work, the right-of-way, and all of the other things that would be involved in that. And that's a pretty big pull for us as a city, and it is a project that's of regional significance, and so that's the way we're approaching that. And as I've discussed before with you, we feel that the opportunity window on that is now because of the possibility, the real possibility, that Burlington Northern's going to up their traffic on their rail line, the Sumas line, at some time in the next five or six years. And so we would certainly like to get that in now, whether at two trains a day before they have 12 or 15. And it would basically be infeasible to do it once that kind of a volume hits that. And that's a point that we're going to be making strongly when we talk to legislature about this. So other than that, we also presented on the possibility of putting a Cedron Technologies Varcore processor at our wastewater plant, something that Debbie has been working with Janicki Industries on for some time, cooperating on the development of the Omni Digestor first, and now the Varcore, which is a unit that would basically revise how we handle our solids, the biosolids that are left after the treatment process, which is about a little under 200 tons a year that currently we're trucking to Boulder Park in eastern Washington at a cost of about $120,000. This would allow us to basically dry the material out. It's still about 20% solids. When we truck it, it would get down to basically a reduction of 90%, basically dry soils that are Class A, exceptional quality biosolids that could be applied anywhere, gardens, whatever. Stanley Janicki went with us and did an excellent job of presenting all the technical aspects that I just barely understand, but hopefully, or gladly he does, and it looks like a real winner. Part of his presentation was noting that there's 14,000-plus treatment plants in the United States alone. They all have biosolids to deal with, and they're hoping that this is going to be a huge, new way of handling that. And it does have some decided advantages over the existing technologies there. And so, and of course, we're looking forward to this and supporting this because those would at least initially be built right here in Cedar Woolley, and that would be another step towards getting occupation of the Swift Center and bringing those additional jobs to the city that that entails. So we're really, really excited about that. So that's basically all I wanted to let you know.
Madam Mayor, I had some questions for Mark. That's okay. Mark, you talked about those grade A biosolids. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the annual Skagit Agricultural Summit, and there are some local farmers that are very interested in that product. So if it could be locally sourced, that would reduce the costs for folks here and also reduce our carbon footprint, if you will, of trucking it around, and great savings for the city as well. I just wanted to get a little bit of minutia, a little bit, because I've got my nose in it, about the sourcing of the salts and sands is from the county. Is there, are you looking at other sources? You have a little update on that?
Certainly. In fact, Nathan Salsina is here tonight, and we've been talking about that. He's got an idea on how to revise our process for the next season. Basically, what happened this year, and a reason we weren't quite as effective as you're used to, is we basically were cut off on our supply of salt sand that we normally get from the county. We always bunker and stockpile what we normally use. This year, of course, was not a normal year. We're hoping it doesn't become a normal year. But nonetheless, we found a couple of weaknesses in our system with this kind of storm. We were about one machine short of having enough equipment. We're dealing with that, we think, in a low-cost way by looking at adding an attachment for our loader, basically another snow plow that would allow us to operate a little more efficiently. And Nathan is also looking at some modifications to our storage facilities to handle it with pure sand or a sand mix that we would do locally. Their sand mix, in fact, Nathan, you want to say a little bit about that and just answer that question?
So the mix that we get from the county is six to one, six parts sand, one part salt. And if we have our own, you know, facility to store the material, we'll be able to mix it, you know, three to one, get a lot more reaction. Because what the problem is, is, you know, when it's that cold for that long and those traffic bonds, the packs of snow bonds it to the road, you know, nothing's going to get that stuff up. You can run over it as many times as you want with the plow, it's not going to come up, you know, without chemicals and salt. So anyway, we'll be looking at modifying our facility so we can look at buying our own, so you'll be seeing a probably slightly increased budget request for salt this next year, so.
Nathan?
I noticed that somewhere up in Watcom County, I think it was in Bellingham or Ferndale, they were using beets?
Yeah, there are some municipalities, I don't think there's any in the county here that use beet juice. And I'm not real familiar, are you familiar with that stuff? I know it takes some specialized equipment to apply it, so we'd have a pretty good, you know, investment in some equipment capital to make it happen and some, you know, some handling of the material, but we could look into anything, I guess.
Not sure what the acceptance would be on red snow around here, though. It might work for Christmas, I don't know. There are actually a number of other ways of handling that. There are materials that you can put down before ice and snow starts that keep it from sticking. We did that over in Colville for the years I was over there. It's kind of a pre-event thing that the state does as well. And then there are, of course, the mixes you put down afterwards, and so, yeah, we're looking at that. But the salt or the salt sand is pretty effective. There are some potential environmental issues with that, and we'll be looking at that as well and being careful on how we roll this out. But anyway, just, I should say that we had very few complaints, really, during the events. We had a few, but the guys were out there and ahead of it pretty much the whole time. Any lack that we had wasn't due to the lack of people being there when they needed to be there. In fact, they were called in a number of times. Nathan, in particular, came out of several times, you know, after going home after a 10-hour shift and did some more work. And we thanked the crew for doing that. But as he mentioned, not having that salt sand meant that we were basically trying to scrape up the ice, and when it gets to that point, you're basically done until you can get something else on there. So of course, it's a little different. I mean, I spent 15 years in Colville, and it's a little different over there. Didn't have any problem driving on back snow and ice. Here, folks kind of expect it to look black even after a snow event, so.
Yeah, it's a different type of snow.
Pardon?
The snow is a lot wetter and heavier here.
Yeah, yeah, there are differences, so anyway.
All right, thank you.
Just have one late materials item that's on your dais for you. It's the proposed MOU with AFSMI. You can see, it's a fairly short document. Really, we're addressing an interpretation issue with Section 4.10.2 of the collective bargaining agreement. This MOU has been agreed to by the unit, and we're looking for your approval tonight so we can sign off on it. It provides clarity in the interpretation of that provision, and so I'm looking for a motion to approve the attached MOU with AFSMI.
Okay.
Mayor?
Any questions? Yes, yes?
I would like to move the memorandum of agreement with AFSMI, Local 176-SW.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved? Or dis... opposed? All right, wish him好运.
Excellent. I think in the interest of time, that'll be good for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I have just a couple of quick updates for council. This week, we sent off our investment and debt policies that we talked about previously. So they've been sent into the state to be certified after their review, and then we'll bring those back with information and any comments they may give us on those. I will be sending to you the next round of policies we have. We have some financial management policies that'll be next, and we can talk more about those at one of our upcoming work sessions. One of the things that we're working on this week is the funding for the library. We've been moving along and working through that process. We have it down to a couple of different alternatives on bond funding versus a single placement bond with different banks. So the steps that it looks like we'll go through is we will have information, we'll send out to banks to get bids on that funding package. We have the option of, if those are successful, of going with those, or if we feel we could do better with a general, more traditional bond issue, we have the option to go with that as well. So we've been working with our financial advisor and running the numbers and the different scenarios there. And we're probably within a day or two of having the RFP finalized and that ready to ship out to the banks to take a look at. And then we'll hopefully get some positive comments on that. As far as the budget goes, I'm putting the final touches on the 2019 budget book. There's some changes in the format that I'm doing right now, so we'll have that probably wrapped up, I'm thinking, by the end of next week. So we'll have that information coming out to you, and I'll deliver a copy to each of you, and we'll have that available to the public as well.
Great, thank you. Councilman Couch?
I just have a couple of quick thank yous to all of our city staff that worked around the clock to keep the streets clear, get our garbage picked up, and keep the city running. We do appreciate it. Special thanks to Nathan for finding me some sandbags for my patrol car when I was unprepared in the snowstorm, so I appreciate the help there. And since we have Carl here from the Rotary, you know, we talked about a few projects, and I just want to send my thanks from the city council to the Rotary and for the improvements that are coming with the community center and all the work that the Rotary does in the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Councilman Corrigan?
Going to ditto everything Councilman Couch just said. Call it good.
All right, good. Councilman Kinser?
I just want to thank the city maintenance staff as well because this was a snowstorm that really we don't expect to see anymore, and we can't expect perfection and perfect preparation for something like that, just because it's so unusual. So I think, you know, overall, you guys did amazing, and we really appreciate it.
Councilman DeYoung?
Hi. Just a little housekeeping. On March 13th, I will be out of town, and so I'd like to set up a system to be able to phone in my participation with the city council meeting that's scheduled that day. Also, just to echo previous council members, thank yous to our public safety crews. Thank you so much for keeping us safe during the inclement weather. We had to get sandbags. We understand you guys were out there with the traffic incidents and also getting people to the hospital that needed to get there in a safe manner. And I know Nathan, the crew out there, I mean, I was seeing them out there at 5:00 in the morning. I know you were up early even after being called in a second time, so we spent, I just want to say thank you so much, and I'm just going to... And, let's see, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman DeYoung?
I have a couple of things from Cook Road. One's really interesting, is that the cold has destroyed the sidewalk in front of 490. The cement's coming up, the aggregate underneath is clearly visible. And I think... And I think that's because they put in a mailbox after the fact. They probably damaged it themselves, but anyway, it looks interesting, and it was a result of the freeze, I'm sure. And the other thing is, at 8:10, the illegal domicile is disturbing the renters at 8:24 who have two small children by loud parties and such. I'd really like to see about getting them out of there. And I won't be here on the 6th.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Judith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly?
Hi. Nathan, I just wanted to thank you also for coming out and moving the snow in front of Sedron and BYK on the 14th because we were having a, turned out to be a very successful event there. Seventy-five people or more showed up, and if they hadn't had any place to park, it would have been just that much more challenging for people to get in there. So thank you again for that and for all the work that the crew's done. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And I, you've already heard me say it, but I'm going to echo it as well. And I also had the opportunity to spend the morning writing in one of the plows, or in the plow, and I saw what kind of work that is. That's hard work, and it takes a lot of precision, and it takes skill. People may not think so, but it actually does. Thank you for that opportunity. So, all right, so we will move on. It is now 7:52, and I am going to open it up for public comment. All right. I ask if you come forward to keep it to three minutes, and please give your name and address. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody raised, rose their hand, or beat them to it, so... Carl Garrison, and I'm here on behalf of the Cedar Rowley Rotary. I have some blueprints of the, and I'd be happy to share the improvements in the community center.
We'll share. Oh, you have it. Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know what's going on.
It is nice.
We already have a building permit, so we're good to go there, thanks to Nathan, the man of the hour, and probably John over there. He probably approved it, thank you. We're going to rearrange the storage in there so that it's more useful, and this is the second phase of work in the community center. It started with Mark Mauden's year back in 2008, and I have commitment from the next two Rotary presidents to continue working on this until we get it to the done stage. So this one is to put the concrete, pavement, or stamped concrete outside. We're planning it so that we can have a covered storage area. And this week, I added a arbor to the thing because I'm thinking it's going to be a great wedding venue, and having a little arbor will be a central focal point. So that went over pretty well this morning at our meeting. And the big thing for us, and the reason we want to do this particular project, is we want to utilize some of that area for our own storage, and we're carving out a little closet for the Seroptimus and one for the chamber. And we'll ask you for a little money to support that, by the way, maybe. Because it does cost money. And anyway, it's going to better utilize the space, and then next year will probably be the kitchen. Mike Janicki wants to, he's our next president, and he wants to tackle the kitchen. And the following year is Mike Moser, and he wants, he'll do what's left, which are the restrooms, and possibly remove the fireplace and open it up a little bit more. And so that's the general plan. I'm here for any questions, and I'm about out of time, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Carl?
I do have a question. How does this interact with the Spray Park?
Well, this was started, my, the nucleus of this project was in combination with the Spray Park, and this was to count towards the grant funding of the Spray Park. We didn't get the grant, but that didn't slow us down. We're going to finish the job that we started, so...
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Carl, thank you for coming presenting. Anyone else? Okay, it is 7:56, and I am going to close public comment. We will now move on to the second reading for the possible adoption of West Bennett, West Nelson, Beatty, Robinson, and the Borseth Utility Connection Fee. So Mark, did you want to talk about this?
Well, of course, you heard about this first on, at the meeting on January 23rd. And this is, of course, in follow-up to your authorization to design and then build the West Bennett, West Nelson, Beatty sewer project that provided infill for that area. And we have completed the project. We did come in a fair amount under our budget. It basically doesn't change the tenor of what you authorized us to move forward with, and that was, even with the reduction in cost, the per-service cost for full recovery is about $15,000. We had suggested that we have a recovery cost that is equivalent to the highest previous cost, which was Fruitdale Special Connection Area of $3,450, and that's what is in the memorandum tonight. You, of course, can do whatever you choose on that, but that's where, that's the way the memo is currently set up. So we're recommending that you approve the ordinance, I don't know what the number is, to establish a utility connection fee of $3,450 pursuant to RCW 3592-025 for the real property benefited by a sewer main extension on West Bennett, West Nelson, Beatty, Robinson, and Borseth. Of course, the last two streets are not built yet, but they are planned for this year, 2019. It'll be about another $133,000 project by our estimated costs. We do have that scheduled for this year, and so if you do approve this, we would, in addition to the services that are currently within the completed work, those would be eligible and would get a connection letter next year after completion of that project based on the same special connection fee area, or estimate. So that's the gist of this, and your pleasure.
All right. So before we make any kind of motions, I am, this is also part of the public hearing. I am going to open it up for public hearing. It is 7:58. Is there anyone who would like to give any kind of testimony or make comment regarding If not, then I will close the public hearing at 7:59. And council, what is your pleasure here?
I'll move to adopt.
Okay. And the second by...
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilwoman Corningay to adopt, to approve ordinance, and this would be Ordinance 191819, establishing a utility connection fee of 3,450,000 pursuant to RCW 3592-025 for real estate benefit by a sanitary sewer main on West Bennett, West Nelson, Beatty, Robinson, and Borseth Streets. Wow, okay, I'm having trouble tonight. So is there any kind of questions, conversation regarding this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we have unfinished business. It's the city-issued cell phones for the members of the city council. This is the first reading, but action is required. We did have discussion on this at our work, at our last work session. This would be Resolution 1017-19, and it is found on page 38. I don't know, Erin, did you want to address this, or...
Yeah, I think this is fairly straightforward. The council addressed this issue at the last work session. There was a pretty robust discussion about the use of city-owned cell phones for elected officials, and the requests from the council, what appeared to be the consensus was to have a policy that would allow for city-issued cell phones to be used by council members, essentially at individual council members' discretion. So the resolution in the packet simply authorizes city council members to access city-owned and maintained cell phones.
Okay, is there any discussion regarding this? Is there a motion?
I have discussion. Is there money budgeted this year for how many cell phones and at what cost? No. Okay.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution with the proviso that it's up to the individual council member to decide whether to use them or not, and that they be returned to the city.
Okay. So basically, what's in the resolution? Okay. Is there a second? So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, seconded by Councilman Owen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Let's do a show of hands, all in favor? Okay, and opposed? All right, so Stan, the motion, the resolution carries. All right. So moving on to new business, the amendments to residential 15 zone. This is on page 44. Is that you, John?
Yes, thank you. So this one's pretty easy to at least describe. The R15 zone, that's the 15-unit-per-acre multifamily zone that is really the only multifamily, strictly multifamily zone in the city. Right now, there's a requirement that no structure can have more than eight units per building. We had a developer request, a variance, to allow 12 units a couple of years ago, and that 12-unit building was built across the street from Cascade Middle School. It's a three-story, 12-unit building, new apartment building, that was done as sort of a task to see how the community would respond to a building like that. Since that time, they've requested a zoning change, because I didn't want them to, if they were going to do that again, I didn't want them to get another variance. That's not how variances work. So they requested a zoning change to allow 12-unit buildings in the R15 zone. That went to the Planning Commission in October. They discussed the merits and the concerns, and one of the things that they found was they were comfortable with the building as a three-story, but they didn't want to see a 12-story, like, one or two-story building, they say, they didn't want to see a 12-unit, one or two-story building, because that starts to get really big and kind of defeats the purpose of this, which is to conserve space. When you put, when you give it a third story, you're able to conserve a lot more space for open space and parking, which are always a concern in the tighter densities. 15 units, fairly dense, not by comparison to other jurisdictions, but it's the densest that we have. So the Planning Commission came up with the proposed amendments to this, which more or less changes one word, but the new requirement would read multifamily residential use is up to eight units per building are allowed, or up to 12 units per building if the building is three stories and the units are evenly distributed between those three floors. So what that's saying is, you're allowed to do, this would make a change to say 12 units would be okay, as long as you go three stories, and it's not making the footprint any bigger than an eight-story building. Apologize for that. An eight-unit building would be otherwise. Planning Commission passed, made a recommendation to approve, and this is a first read for the city council to consider.
So are there any questions for John? All right, so as he said, it is a first read, so no action is required at this time. And we can move on to the proposed annexation, Falklands, 1.25 acres on East Jones Road. Let's see, I guess that would be you again, John?
Correct, thank you. All right, so how many of the city council members have seen the new subdivision being constructed on Jones Road? It's sort of a, it's sort of a hammerhead off of, behind Jones Road. By hammerhead, I mean like, there's a narrow strip that goes up, and on one side of the road, on the left side of the road, there's four or so, three or four residential lots. On the east side of the road is county. The developer of that subdivision was able to purchase the property along their new road, in between Jones Road and their subdivision. It's 1.25 acres, and they would like to, it is part of the urban growth area. They would like to have that area annexed and then quickly convert that, do the work to make that as part of the larger subdivision. So the property is bound to the north by city, to the west by city, and to the south by city. The annexation part of property is. The property to the west, to the east of the subject property is not in city limits, it is in the urban growth area. We spoke with that property owner, and he's not interested in annexing, so this kind of makes this annexation about as simple as it could get. There's one property owner that would like to annex. There's no adjacent neighbors that are interested in annexing. So we've received a notice of intent to proceed, to commence annexation proceedings. The council now has the option to accept, reject, or geographically modify the proposed annexation. As I said, you know, can't really geographically modify it. And then there's a couple other questions that follow. If the city should accept the annexation petition, or allow the annexation petition to be submitted, is really a clearer way of stating it. If the, if a petition to annex is accepted, should the city require simultaneous adoption of the proposed zoning regulations? What that means is, what zoning do we want it to be when it comes into the city? Currently, the, when we do our comprehensive zone map, which is not only the city zoning, but the, looking at our urban growth area outside of city limits, we look at what its likely zoning is going to be before we designate it as urban growth area. So in our comprehensive plan, this area is slated to be residential five zone, so we've already studied the likely zoning, and it would be residential five without changing our comprehensive plan to change the zoning. And that is what the property owner expects the property to come in as, as is our five. And then the third question would be, if the petition to annex is accepted, should the city require the assumption of all or any portion of the existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed? So what that means is, if the area to annex, would it pay all the same taxes and levy rates, adopted levies, that everybody else in the city does? And we, staff recommends yes on that. There are some, this is a first read, so you don't necessarily have to make any decisions today.
All right. Are there any questions for John? So again, it's a first read, so no action is required. And we can move on to the Cedar Rowley Police Department Lieutenant position. This is also a first reading, but action is requested. So do you want to handle this? Erin?
Yes, thank you. So the chief reported earlier about the proposed reorganization happening in the department. I look at this really as a housekeeping item as opposed to something more significant. We stopped carrying the position of lieutenant in our annual salary ordinance because we didn't intend to fill it for a few-year period. We're ready to fill it, and if we'd thought about it, we would have had it in the ordinance last fall. So the ordinance is very straightforward, it simply adds a...
It simply adds a police lieutenant back in. The salary that we proposed is the midpoint between a top step sergeant and a chief, so just dead center. And the cost of the lieutenant promotion is really de minimis because sergeants get paid overtime and lieutenants don't. So Lieutenant Dan is expected just to put more hours in. Welcome to the ranks of the rest of us. But there is a cost in the reorg side, which is the promotion of a sergeant from a detective, and I estimated that to be about $7,980, which we can accommodate within our anticipated budget. So we're looking for a motion to adopt the salary ordinance, the ordinance establishing the salary for the police lieutenant. And if you approve that tonight, then it is our intent to promote Dan fairly soon. I don't know if we're talking about Friday, but possibly as early as Friday this week.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Mayor, move to adopt ordinance, I believe, 1919-19, an ordinance establishing the salary of police lieutenant.
Second.
So motion was made by Councilman Couch, seconded by...
Everybody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that is it. So if there was no other discussion or hearing without objection?
We adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Wow, surprise. I looked at that agenda, thought we were going to be here forever.
Yeah, it was a good agenda.